Good morning, we're reconvening in regular session. We have several executive session items. Counselor, first item?
Thank you Madam Chair, members of the board. First executive session item was with regard to Item 6 on the regular agenda. And I concern three lawsuits for vising direction. They were Stewart Title and Trust of Tucson versus, excuse me, N-Star Valley versus Pima County Board of Supervisors. Second was Joe Caesar et al. versus Pima County et al. Third was Broadway Realty and Trust Incorporated versus Pima County et al. There was a vice of directions to all three and specific discussion of a settlement offer in the Broadway Realty case. The Pima County Attorney's Office seeks direction as to how to respond to the settlement proposal.
With pleasure, the board.
Move that we proceed as discussed in executive session.
Motion and a second, objections?
I object.
One objection, any further objections? Motion carries four to one, the Supervisor Miller voting in objection. Then, we move to the agenda, executive session one. And Board of Supervisors sitting as other boards, flood control, district board, executive session two. With pleasure, the board.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Move that we appeal decisions made by the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality for the road on the topic. Section 401 water quality certification.
There's motion and a second Supervisor Valdez.
Madam Chair, I wanted to make sure that it was very clear what the rationale for this decision, or at least as we move forward. Supervisor Elias mentioned the surface water management document. Apparently, that was submitted without any notification to any of the commenters. Appeared in the final document without any review. And apparently, there are some issues with that. So going forward, I want to make sure this is an appreciative decision. But certainly, some documentation that I feel I need to know about in order to move forward. And with that, I support this motion.
We have a motion on the floor, any further discussion? Objections?
I object.
One objection, any further objections? Motion carries four to one, Supervisor Miller, object. Moving back to the regular agenda. We are now sitting as the Board of Supervisors, flood control district board. Item seven is a regional flood control district contract. With pleasure, the board on this item. Supervisor Elias.
I'll move Item 7 flood control district board.
Second.
Motion and a second, any objections? Hearing non, motion carries. You're also going to note that this is in the consent calendar, item eight. Board of Supervisors sitting as Board of Supervisors, item eight, the consent calendar. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address us on any item in the consent calendar? If not, with pleasure, the board.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I'll go ahead and move consent in its entirety.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I move to divide, I call to divide the question and hold Item 1 and 7 for separate discussion and vote.
I would... You don't mind my motion?
Well, you, okay, alright. Items 1 and 7, okay. Then, I entertain a motion on the remaining items on the consent. Motion and a second to approve the remaining consent in its entirety. Any objections? Hearing non, motion carries. Moving on to Item 1, health, Arizona healthcare cost containment system. Supervisor Miller.
Madam Chair, I have some questions for Dr. Garcia. The one thing that I note on here is, is this an ongoing program that will have annual requests related to it? Or is this a one-time?
Supervisor Miller, sorry Chairman Bronson, Supervisor Miller. At this point, this is a one-time ask. Have these items in the past been, come up annually? They have. But each time, they're being assessed independently. For instance, last year, we did not do this for our colleagues in collaboration with our partners at TMC. And I think these are the kinds of items that need to be reconsidered each time. And we need to have a really good justification each time.
Okay, and the other question I have is, did we contract these out in the past? Or were these done by internal employees?
Chairman Bronson, Supervisor Miller, it's a variety. These are three separate items. The PCAP contract was an actual contract that we had with Pima County Assistance Program. And that was something that was contracted out. Cardinal Health provided, was a contract that we had for the acquisition of immunizations for adults. And the third element is the SACASA relationship. SACASA is a little bit complicated in that components of it are, were mandated by code and by statute. And so those pieces, we continue to retain. And we will contract directly with a service provider. The other elements, which had to do with mental health services, crisis intervention, and support and advocacy, those were contracted out to SACASA, the Arizona Children's Association doing business at SACASA.
So these items, my understanding is that they're not, since it's adult, it is not mandated? Is that correct?
Supervisor, Chairman Bronson, Supervisor Miller, you are absolutely correct.
So, were these contracted out in the past for the adult portion?
No.
No, okay.
I apologize if I made that more confusing than it needed to be. The purchase of the pharmaceuticals was part of the contract. The actual service is actually provided by the Health Department. And the Health Department purchased those pharmaceuticals for the delivery of it.
Okay, and then our employees administer.
Correct.
Okay. And then, the other thing I wanted to know is, in the upcoming, you know, related to this upcoming budget, this is going to cause a reduction in your funding for this year of $770,000? That we're allocating here because we no longer have to do that? And will it be a reduction in the headcount in your department as well?
Chairman Bronson, Supervisor Miller, in terms of the FTE impact on the Department of Health, it has essentially no impact. The services, even with the acquisition of these pharmaceuticals through our partners at Tucson Medical Center, they're still being delivered by our staff, they're still being administered by our staff. So the net impact on FTE is zero. Where you will see an impact is that those other contractual budget items probably will not be part of the Health Department budget.
Okay, thank you. With those answers, I'll move approval of this item.
Motion and a second, Supervisor Elias.
I'd just like to comment on this particular item. And thank Dr. Garcia and the Health Department for their work on it. Jan Lesher as well, the Assistant County Administrator for Health. But also our partners at TMC, very important to us. And we appreciate your caring approach to healthcare. And how important that is for folks all around here. But particularly, those folks who are still without insurance or facing very difficult health issues that are seemingly overwhelming. But then also during the past year, we've had a real cathartic kind of situation take place with Southern Arizona Center against sexual assault. And I'd like to thank Kodak for stepping up to the plate and being brave and entering into the world of services, particularly for women who have been abused in a most tragic way. And it deserves to be mentioned, you need to be thanked for that. But also, we all need to be aware of how critical these services are. And what are the consequences if we don't act? So Kodak really stepped up to the plate because I think the concept of not having a sexual assault center here in Pima County, and the thought that women frankly would receive no services. And on a more difficult level, the forensic evidence extraction means the perpetrators would get away. So I'm proud of the work that you do, I appreciate it, and supportive of the motion.
Thank you Supervisor Elias. And I think your statement pretty much reflects how the majority of this board feels. Supervisor Carol, you wanted to make a statement?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just wanted to say, I appreciate Tucson Medical Center's attendance and your leadership today. And I want to say, bringing new federal dollars while still maintaining the quality of care. As you cut expenses, as you reduce your overhead. I've seen your new construction, went delighted that I'm a neighbor of yours. And I'm very proud to have the TMC partners in my district. But I also want to say, it's great that you can do an addition to a project that does benefit this community and its long-term health goals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to thank Dr. Garcia. I think this is a really good, you know, having this go out to a TMC and having them do this programs for us. I think it's a really good step forward, it's going to save the county money. And then we've got to partner with TMC to get that done, so thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Miller, any further comments? If not, are there any objections? Hearing non, motion carries unanimously on consent item number one. Moving on to consent item number seven, Supervisor Miller.
Madam Chair, I just had some questions on this. I understand the funding sources, one of them is the, it's a code that goes back to RTA. It's called County Route 12.6. And my question is, we're building this new road and these monies had been pre, or have they been? I'd asked Mr. Huckleberry this question. Were these monies allocated to other roads previously and pulled from other projects?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, this is a typically new round of allocation of 12.6 money. Each year, the region receives a new allocation of 12.6 money. And that, those funds are really allocated through the regional process with Pima Association governments.
And we have this, this contract today is a not to exceed 6.6 million. I just wanted to note, there were planning and engineering design services of 1.75 million in June of '13. And then another 743,000 to acquire the property from the Tucson Airport Authority, bringing the total of this 8.4 million. Are we, okay, that was a question, do we have, you know, this is for a, you know, to get the road realigned. And it's to protect Raytheon and building this road to ensure that we get a tech park. And I was reading the article in today's paper. And it says the relocation is made necessary by the possible addition of a new runway at Tucson International Airport. Are, there aren't any firm place, plans in place for that, are there? That hasn't been determined yet to be?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, the second runway is in the program for the FAA to begin the environmental impact statement in April of this year, probably next month or later.
So is Tucson Airport Authority committed to moving forward for this? Are they moving forward for this? Have they already signed agreements, etc.?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Miller, Tucson Airport Authority Board and I think the FAA are moving forward with the second runway environmental impact statement. And subsequent to that, will have to appropriate money out of the Federal Aviation Administration. So in the sense that this is a process, much the similar process that we went through at the roadway to get an environmental clearance to actually build it. So it's probably, the environmental impact statement process is probably an 18-month to 30-month process. It would precede the actual construction of the second runway.
So, okay, so the other question was, do we already have committed investors in the tech park? Do we have any?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, we don't even have a tech park. If what we have is a concept.
Yes.
And relocating the road is really, obviously facilitates development of the tech park in the future, which is a job creation center. Most important element of the relocation and use of excess road is to provide that buffer for Raytheon so they can continue to do the work that they do without waivers of the Department of Defense, which would impede their capacity and impede potentially their employment status here within the region.
Okay, thank you. I guess my issue with this roadway is that we have a tremendous amount of road issues in Pima County. The gentleman spoke early about, earlier about the fact that we need to maintain what we've got before we move forward with new roads. And, you know, there's no debate about the condition of the roads in Pima County. And so I cannot support this, I won't waste a motion. I'll let someone else make a motion.
Supervisor Valdez.
Madam Chair, this is an ongoing project. It's been in the works for a long time. And if we take a look at our economic development goals under Policy 6, Goal Number 3, it's very clearly stated as one of our economic development priorities. And so it's very clear, not only have we been headed in this direction, we believe very clearly that it's important to protect one of our largest private employers. And to quote a former chief executive, and no reference to anyone here, it's about the economy, stupid. And it's really simple, it's, we either protect them or we lose them. It's that simple. So with that, I move that we approve Item Number 7 on the consent calendar.
Motion and a second to approve. And I would note, and I certainly agree with the comment Supervisor Valdez, if we lose Raytheon, we're going to have a heck of a lot more problems.
And I ask for a roll call vote.
Roll call.
Supervisor Carol?
Yes.
Supervisor Elias?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Miller.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chair Bronson?
Yes. Motion carries four to one, Supervisor Miller voting in negative. That brings us back to the regular agenda. We concluded the consent calendar. We move on to Item 9, under procurement, unfinished business. This item was continued. Mr. Rodriguez, I think there was some information that Supervisor Miller had requested.
Chairman Bronson, Supervisor Miller, I believe the question was, are we going to expend $3 million on this contract? The answer is no. There was a mix-up there. We are looking at expending no more than the 1.5 million requested in the item. And we will potentially spend that 1.5 million between those two vendors based on what the costs are, or what are the particular advantages to the county might be, such as availability. But the total amount of the money would be 1.5 million. And should there be a need to increase that, we would of course come back to the board for that approval.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller, I'd like to thank Mr. Rodriguez for getting the information to us. And it clarified everything, all the questions that I have. So with that, I'll move approval of this low bid contract award requisition number 15-112.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, Supervisor.
You know, number one, every time we're coming up with these IT contracts, you know, we have to have some kind of special procurement process related to it. That makes me somewhat uncomfortable. Especially as we're limiting and limiting and limiting the number of people who ultimately have a chance to bid on these kind of projects. So that makes me very uncomfortable. I would ask the maker of the motion if we could limit this contract to 1.5 million so that we're being specific, based on the information that Mr. Rodriguez has offered us this morning. It seems that that will be appropriate as well. And, you know, the last time we had a big procurement issue with IT, I asked Mr. Rodriguez what the value of our, of all those computers and various office machinery, what they were worth, and you told me nothing. That's exactly what you said, and you were very cavalier about that in your answer. And that concerns me because ultimately, what we've seen is, a lot of people lining up to get their hands on that equipment. So I don't think it was valueless. So I'm not questioning Mr. Rodriguez's integrity here, or questioning ultimately his business practices. But I do think we have to be a little careful here because we have a lot of spending in IT to do over the next few years. And it is going to be extremely costly. And I think that we really need to focus on the procurement of those items and how we handle it on an ongoing basis. So that we're making sure that we all understand what the score is. Not just because it's technology, but it's a huge amount of money that we're going to be spending. So not really a question, but a series of statements, I suppose, that should bring us all to a higher level of self-examination.
Thank you Supervisor Elias. I admit to being confused, I don't do that very often. Did you ask the maker of the motion to amend the motion to indicate that the amount of the contract would not exceed $1,545,000?
Yes.
And did the maker of the motion accept that amendment?
Madam Chair, I do accept it. And I would like to just note that if you look at the bottom of that agenda item, it shows 1.5 million to each of the two. We did get, I don't know if that got into the background material, but we did get a corrective update from the procurement department designating $750,000 for each.
Or whichever, I mean, it's not going to be 750,000, it depends on where the best deal is.
Or if they want to split it up, right.
And does the second, or accept the amendment?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so that, no, you did second.
I'm sorry, he made the amendment, that's why I said I accept it.
I think we're reasonably on the same page here. So there's motion and a second, any objections? Hearing non, motion carries. We're moving on to hearings, franchise license permit, Item 10. This is a hearing, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address us on this item? If not, I am going to move that we close the public hearing and deny a liquor license, not because pursuant to Pima County zoning code section 18.31, this is not a permitted use. So it has nothing to do with the liquor license, but rather with the underlying zoning, but that we deny. Motion and a second to deny, any objections?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I'd just like to note that you're correct, this is actually in a residential neighborhood. So that is a violation of code, thank you.
Okay, we are going to do not deny liquor licenses, but in this case, there is a foundation. Is there any other comment? Any objections? Hearing non, motion carries, and then we are recommending denial. Moving on to transportation, Item 11 and Resolution 2015-10. We have one speaker, it is a hearing, Steve Bond.
Thank you. I just want to, I am the founder and promoter of the Tucson Bicycle Classic. It is Tucson's second biggest cycling event, second to the Altour. Generates revenue of $800,000 every time to the regional economy with over 600 people coming from all over the country, Mexico and Canada, to race with their families and friends and support crews. And what we've done this year to deal with some, there were some concerns with some of the residents up in McGee Ranch area about the traffic and about being held up during the race and stuff like that. So what we've done is we've brought in, with, working with Pima County Transportation, we've brought in more signage, more, we're going to have domestic boards out there before the race, letting residents know out in that area that there will be a race coming on in the, there on Duval Mine Ranch Road. And so we're addressing their concerns and working with Pima County Transportation and permitting on this issue. So, and this, and one other thing I want to say about the Tucson Bike Classic is that we, all the money that comes into the race comes from local sponsors, local supporters. And the, what we do every year is we support Emerge, the Center Against Domestic Violence, and also El Grupo Youth Cycling. We put money back in the community too, and this race has been going on for 29 years. Somehow, I've managed to stay involved with it all these years. So I hope you will, I hope you will support our road closures and traffic, traffic control issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chair, I'd like to go ahead and move.
Item 12 has been removed, I was just going to ask before you move the motion. Item 12 was removed from the agenda. And it's part of the Bicycle Classic, so Mr. Brunell, Ms. Cornelio? Oh, it's in, oh, it's in the town, so we, none of our business, is that right? Got it? Okay, so you may have to go down, are you riding in the?
Well, not really, but I mean, we've been, we've been working with all different communities.
Okay, well, it sounds like this particular resolution, because it's within the town of Sabarita, they have to approve it. So is that in the works? Mr. Brunell or Ms. Cornelio, do they know they have to approve this, or?
Supervisor Chair Bronson, yes, we've told them that they need to go to Sabarita.
So you may, you may want to double, make sure that happens?
Well, that's interesting because we went to Pima County and they told us, these are the things that they wanted us to do. Transportation, remember, they wanted the variable message boards on Duval Mine Road. And they wanted more police control, and they wanted a moving vehicle out there as well. So having, having a sheriff and a vehicle just to help control the traffic a little better and keep the cyclists in line, that's one of the complaints we hear.
Is there sufficient time, I think there's sufficient, I am not sure we have the stride. Is there sufficient time next week if we have to, if we have to bring something forward that we can and that the Classic can proceed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
We could just take an alternate approach, make a motion to bring it back on the agenda right now and vote on it, so that way they have direction and we don't have to come back.
Okay, we, that's, okay, we will do that then with Item 12. But let's go to Item 11 first, and then we'll, and if we have to bring it back, then we already have it there. Okay, got it, thank you. Supervisor.
I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing and move Item 11, the hearing on the traffic resolution, 2015-10, for the Tucson Bicycle Classic on Friday, March 13th.
I'll second. Any objections? Hearing non, motion carries on Item 12, Supervisor Valdez.
Madam Chair, having voted on the prevailing side, I move that we reconsider our decision to remove Item Number 12 and Resolution Number 2015-11 from the agenda for immediate reconsideration.
Motion and a second for reconsideration, any objections? Hearing non, motion carries, and we'll see, we'll revisit this item immediately?
Immediately.
And, well, okay, Supervisor Valdez, any objections?
Madam Chair, members of the board, what you might do is just simply add to the resolution that it applies only to any portions of those roadways that lie in the unincorporated area of Pima County.
Supervisor.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we close the public hearing and approve Item Number 12, Resolution Number 2015-11, so that it applies only to the areas in unincorporated Pima County.
Motion and a second, any objections? Hearing non, motion carries. Supervisor Carol.
Madam Chair, for the benefit of the organizer of the Tucson Bicycle Classic, I think you could call the town manager in Sabarita, as soon as first chance you get it, 822-8800. And I'm sure they'll be delighted to help you, that's 822-8800. eight hundred. And I'm sure they'll be delighted to help you. That's eight two two eight eight zero zero. Thank you. They're about to celebrate their twentieth anniversary of the town, so I'm sure they'll be happy to.
We've got our permits already approved for them too, so we'll follow up. Thank you.
We're done. We're done. It's over. Thank you. I hope you were as successful as you were last year.
Thank you. Hopefully you will be.
Yeah. Do you have a fun, not a fun run, but do you have a fun, fun ride?
No, we don't. We have so many categories of racing. We have twenty-nine different categories of racing, from the best men to women, all the way down to junior, nineties, eleven. Yeah. We don't have time and room, of course.
Thank you. Moving on to the addendum agenda, item three, Supervisor Miller.
Madam Chair, I put this on the addendum because we, last meeting, we had a vote that required employees, required employees who use tobacco to attend a smoking cessation class. And that requirement would automatically wipe out the possibility of a surcharge. We have since been in communication, Mr. Huckleberry put out a memo that indicates that he believes that the, and what we talked about in the meeting, and I have the transcript, Supervisor Valdez made the motion, and we have the transcript where he agrees that this will be paid by Pima County. And now we're hearing that from Mr. Huckleberry, just want clarification to ensure we're all on the same page, that the Pima County employees will not be required to pay that surcharge because they're being mandated to do the classes. So that, Mr. Huckleberry? Mr. Huckleberry?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. In looking and listening to the entire discussion, which was somewhat confusing, but I think we came to a conclusion. It was my interpretation of the board's action with regard to the mandatory component was that it was mandatory for an employee who smokes to complete the cessation program in order to receive the waiver. I also concluded that the discussion about whether it's on or off county time was one that the board would not knowingly violate the Fairlight Standards Act, therefore it had to be on the employee's time. And that was my interpretation. And that's kind of how I wrote the memorandum that really talked about both plans, the HDHP plan, the advancing of the health savings account contributions, and the issue of mandatory, and whether or not, and what the word mandatory applied to. So it's my interpretation and obviously the board can correct that if that interpretation's incorrect.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, we, we had a transcript, transcribed by the clerk of the board's office. And if you look at page five of six, when Supervisor Valdez was making the motion, he, he says, and I quote, "They both be required to attend and their supervisors be allowed them the time to attend also." Those were Mr., Supervisor Valdez's words. And then you said, Supervisor Bronson said, "Paid," and Supervisor Valdez said, "Paid." That's my motion. So that was the interpretation that I had, and that was what I voted on, was that the employees did not have to pay this. And this is transcribed by the clerk of the board. I would just like to ask the question of the county attorney, Mr. Weaver, is this, if we mandate that employees who smoke have to take these classes, do we have to pay for them or is what Mr. Huckleberry said correct?
If the classes are mandatory in the sense that they are required as a condition of employment, then they have to occur on county time or they have to occur on some other form of paid time. So you can't mandate employees to participate in these classes and then not pay them for that time. So it depends on what you mean by mandatory. If you mean mandatory as a condition of employment with the county, you can be punished if you don't go, that's one form of mandatory. If you're just doing it as an incentive for them to get the lower rates, then no, that'd be different.
Okay. Can someone explain? I mean, this was transcribed directly from the meeting. Supervisor Valdez.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Valdez.
Madam Chair, I, you know, I know that was a little bit the circumstance of making sausage. And sadly, that's not a clean process in and of itself. The intent was very simply, if we recall, when the SEIU representative were here and speaking, they indicated that some of the supervisors in some of our departments weren't allowing their employees to go and attend the informational sessions on healthcare relative to PPO and ADHP. So that it had been my intent, although the transcript and obviously it's part of the messy process, it had been my intent that that be mandatory and on county time. When, and I see that.
And then that's attendance at the.
Correct.
At the information sessions.
Correct. When we added the, the component of the mandatory smoking cessation program, I didn't explicitly say that in my motion. Have a look at the transcript. Obviously, it's, it got a little confusing. But my intent, I very clearly and explicitly said on the informational sessions that they were mandatory and on county time. I did not do so on the smoking cessation. So while it's, it's a little messy, the intent there was that the information sessions be mandatory and the cessation, obviously it was mandatory. But having, having learned through Mr. Huckleberry's memo what, what the requirements were, I don't disagree with that assessment. And I would strongly urge ratification of that memo.
Supervisor Elias.
Well, in the past week, having listened to a lot of discussion from employees as well as from other folks that are constituents of mine, I've come to the conclusion that Supervisor Carol was actually correct in his no vote on the entire policy. And I would vote, I would make a motion to reconsider the item right now, having voted in the majority, to reconsider the item right here and now and get something down on paper that we can back ourselves up on. Because quite honestly, this thing is so muddy because of what it entails. And frankly, we were not prepared on any level by staff or as the board of supervisors to make a clear decision on this, having not really understood the full implications of it, I think. We really need to reconsider it right now. And I'll make that motion to reconsider.
I'll second it. Motion and a second. Objections? One, one objection, two objections, and further objections. If not, motion carries for reconsideration. Supervisor Elias.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we do not implement the nicotine tobacco-free healthy workplace initiative and for fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen.
I'd second. We need to consider the whole package, the benefit package, because that's what we're reconsidering. So your motion only mentions one part of the benefit package.
Okay, then, then, excuse me.
Let me clarify that and say that.
Sorry. Little trouble with the microphone here. My motion is that we do not implement the nicotine tobacco-free healthy workplace initiative and medical insurance for fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor, motion and a second. Supervisor Valdez.
Madam Chair, Mr. Huckleberry, at this point, I believe a part of the issue that we were facing was that we were having a deadline in terms of programming ADP to handle the change in the healthcare insurance. How would the reconsideration of that affect that particular issue going forward?
Madam Chair, members of the board, if you include in your motion the approval of PPO plans and their rates and the PP and the, and the HDHP rates, absent the tobacco-free surcharges, as well as your previous motion with regard to contribution to the HSA plans, I think you're fine. So you, so I think, you know, we need to use those numbers because I think the point is you're reconsidering the entire item.
Okay, what does that mean, Mr. Huckleberry?
It means that, if anybody has my memo, it's just you're adopting exactly what we approve, what you approve for the health insurance rates and the contributions from the employees for the HDHP plan and the PPO plan as pursuant to, I believe Supervisor Valdez's motion.
Okay, so that means that we are eliminating the tobacco surcharges. That's my intent in this motion.
And that's what I'm saying. You, you said tobacco surcharge, that's fine. What you need to do is, is the actual base rates for the PPO and the HDHP absent the tobacco surcharge.
That's correct.
Madam Chair, I want to make very clear going forward, that the two things are going, are, are, need to be very clear. A, eighty to ninety percent of our health plan are paid for by the taxpayers. And we are going forward doing nothing in terms of our tobacco and our utilization based on tobacco-related illness. But number two, we are going forward, having taken a step forward and asking that again, two-thirds, again, two-thirds of our employees will be subsidizing the one-third who smoke.
Thank you Supervisor Valdez. To his point, Supervisor Valdez's point, what is, he mentioned the cost to taxpayers. Is there any way, have we, any information about what that, what smokers cost taxpayers, at least with the county?
Madam Chair, if you look at our experience with regard to medical use and the cost of providing tobacco-related medical care, it ranges from as low as about four million dollars to as high as about nine million dollars per year based on our sixteen hundred employees who smoke.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Roll call.
Supervisor Carol. Supervisor Elias.
Aye.
Supervisor Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Valdez.
Nay.
Chair Bronson.
Aye. I would hope though that we revisit this next year. The costs are spiraling out of control. All right, moving on to item five and six, item four has been removed from the agenda. Supervisor Elias.
Items five and six under agenda.
I'll second. Any objections? Hearing non-motion carries. That brings us to the end of today's agenda. If there are no objections, then this meeting is considered.